Meeting, can you please judge us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, it seems like we were just here, which we were yesterday afternoon with the city. It was really a productive meeting, I thought, covering a lot of topics. Both things was good?
Well, I got a call after the meeting about the homeless in Bend and the problems. And so, I've been on the phone with a couple commissioners, and I said, "You should have called me in the morning." I was sitting next to, you know, everyone, but yes, the homeless, it seems to be, you know, downtown has been cleaned up, but they have a serious problem by the Buy Mart. And I know it's going to be brought up tonight at the city council meeting. So, you know how the homeless were trying to work on the veterans, trying to work on the families, the children, and, you know, what can we do?
So, a couple of city councilors called you about that?
No, no, I called them because a citizen called me about it and said, "Patty, can you please do something?" So, anyway.
I thought that was a part of the...
That was like, yeah.
...part, was just getting to talk with some of the other commissioners and visit with them?
Yeah, it was great.
Yeah, it was very good, you know, just a lot of the staff interacting, the lunch was good to be able to invite City of Bend over and just relax a little bit, right before that meeting also.
Good. All right, well, so we'll start with our citizen input. It looks like we have one request to speak. This is for anybody that's here that wants to speak on a topic that's not on the agenda today, and there's a blue form up there if you do want to speak on that, but have Randy Lunsford come about and talk about the Terrebonne refinement plan. Morning.
First of all, thank you for your time and allowing me to speak and continue to hammer on this. I know you have a meeting coming up next week, but the community asked if I'd step forward and just lay out a few things in case they weren't able to get a chance to present that while they're there. So, overall, there's a community in Terrebonne that feels steamrolled regarding the proposed plan for lower bridge interchange in Highway 97 through Terrebonne. This community is united and forced regarding this issue and have been repetitively presented to every public meeting, yet most of the comments are simply brushed away with the general pat answer of, "Oh, we have methods to address that." I have attended every advisory meeting as well as public meetings. It is sad to report that the community feels beat down, not listened to, and the numbers are dwindling at each meeting. Common comment, ODOT will do what they want regardless and only use these meetings to push their unwavering want to create a couplet in Terrebonne. The movement of truck traffic seems to be primary. Not satisfied with the issues not being addressed with real answers and solutions, one individual hired his own highway engineer. Listening and working with the community, a design was created for the lower bridge interchange, addressed all traffic issues and flow. The plan was presented to ODOT with minor changes, was the accepted, was the now-accepted ODOT recommended solution. Imagine if ODOT would have worked with the issues from the community, what could have happened with not only the lower bridge interchange, but the rest of the issues that exist in Terrebonne transportation area? As a footnote, I'd like to champion the concept of reimbursing the gentleman that paid to have that design created. It's the design that's being used. ODOT would have paid Kettleson had he designed that system. I think the community owes this man reimbursement and a debt for overcoming a huge challenge, which is the number-one issue in Terrebonne, which was the lower bridge interchange. It sounds great, looks good on paper, that ODOT utilized the advisory committee, held numerous public meetings. This fact is lost in the reality that the notes taken during advisory meetings were rarely addressed in following meetings. This was even more evident with the notes and input from the public. The basic response was, "Thanks for the input." I encourage you to take a look at the worksheets presented at both types of meetings that outline goals and requirements and how to achieve them. Those are found online and were provided by Kettleson and ODOT. They are ambiguous at best and left to anyone's interpretation of how to meet them, yet they were the tool used to discredit ideas from the community and to reinforce the must-have couplet. Regarding couplets, what is the status in Redmond? You know, we're always being compared, Redmond to Madras. Fifth Street, Sixth Street, were a couplet in Redmond? Not anymore. Why? And a bypass was created. Basic reason, I'm thinking, is it probably failed, failed to handle traffic, and we're already being told our traffic counts are what Redmond's was at that point in time. Simply stated, it appears ODOT used a cookie-cutter approach, evident with the templates they would use, and simply say, "It does not fit," when somebody would propose doing something slightly different. It wasn't, "Well, this roundabout, you know..." Roundabouts wouldn't work, yet now there's a roundabout. "Well, it wouldn't work because, see, it doesn't fit." But now it does. ODOT likes to use traffic numbers to present their points. As an example, at the planning meeting a few weeks ago, it was stated that imagine how five-lane highway would look based on Veterans Way and Redmond, yet the traffic projections do not show Terrebonne having the same volume as Redmond does until 2040. They present traffic counts on Bee Avenue, Smith Rock Way, which are both the same, yet those numbers are not accounted for in the possible traffic backup onto the train tracks with the stop sign on Smith Rock Way. Has ODOT done testing for the proposed overpass? It only seems logical to confirm the ground in the area, in and around the area, for the proposed plan is suitable. We are all aware of the issues in Lapine as well as the highway between Philomath and Newport. I'm not saying ODOT fails, I'm not criticizing ODOT, it's just, it seems like due diligence needs to be put forth before a plan is decided to move forward on, get halfway through it and go, "Oops, can't do that. Now, how do we undo everything we've already screwed up in the process of getting there?" ODOT has not, has yet to provide proof and concept to address issues such as speed. The four lanes being created in Terrebonne could quickly become passing lanes with speeds becoming out of control. When pressed at the planning meeting, ODOT, pressed at the recent planning meeting, ODOT's response via Kittleson representative was that the left-hand lane could be turned into turn lanes only, thus reducing the traffic flow to one lane. Is that not what we have now, single-lane traffic going through town? Safe crossing. ODOT says to trust them that a pedestrian-controlled flashing lights will stop the traffic for safe crossing. Would it not be safer to utilize smart stoplights to allow the pedestrians to cross? ODOT will counter with traffic accidents issues at lights. However, we never hear about the accidents or deaths at flashing lights. Stoplights provide a warning yellow light of the need to stop. Flashing lights just come on. We're putting hundreds of thousands of dollars into the plan to account for bike lanes. Currently, there aren't bikes running through Terrebonne, but yet we've never responded to the request, it's been over 20 years long, coming from the community, to provide a safe method to cross the highway. I'm sure you're all aware that currently, if you live on the east side of the highway, you're bused to school. Put a stoplight there, you'll pay for it just in the tax dollars you've reduced by not having to bus all the kids to school. Business impacts. Delivery issues have yet to be resolved. Promises are made to provide methods that will be designed once the plan is accepted. Businesses do not run on promises. Where is the protection for the businesses that employs the residents of Terrebonne and the heart of the economy? And I will reach out to, for my request and the public's request, to lean on you, our commissioners, to be our enforcement, to be our protectors. We're not a city. We don't have a governing council to take care of us. You're our governing council. Right, wrong, or indifferent, we're looking to you to help...
Randy, we usually give three minutes for this. We've probably gone on about eight or 10. You're almost done, go ahead and finish a couple quicks.
All right, I'll be quick.
Appreciate what you're saying.
Piping of 12th Street? The residents along the existing canal are against this idea? Bend fought to prevent the piping of the North Unit Canal and won. Terrebonne does not have the same financial clout and should not suffer because of it. All this said, I do understand the challenge in front of ODOT, and we have a major traffic issue in Terrebonne. It seems to be, it seems to this simple mind that a little more effort and listening to the truths of the issues still being presented need to be addressed. A better plan does exist. This was partially proven by the community developing the lower bridge interchange. And then quickly, our last consensus, we've got 87% of people against, 13% of people in favor. There's two businesses that are in favor of putting in the couplet. Both of those businesses are benefiting from land sales, one of them benefiting from a designated turn lane on Highway 97 into their property.
So, appreciate, we all appreciate you coming today. We hope you'll be there again on Monday night, that's our official hearing. I know, for myself being on the advisory committee, I've heard that lots of people were supporting the couplet, so I'm real interested in the hearing from people that don't as well, because it's, we've had so many, I've been in so many meetings on it, I keep asking, because it's hard to tell unless you go, I guess, door-to-door, so I do think if there's issues, people need to be there. We are coming to Terrebonne for the hearing, so, and we'll stay there as long as people want to, you know, show up, I guess, and say what they think. I understand a lot of these issues, I think the other commissioners probably do, we've talked about it internally, we've had briefings, and it's good to bring up some of these issues. So, other comments or...
So, it's interesting, change is going to happen. There's dollars to be invested, and it's going to be a little bit of a rocky road, and let's all work together on this. It's a disaster when the semis are coming through at eight and, between eight and nine in the morning for the kids to get to school. It's just an absolute disaster. So, I'm just, you know, getting somewhere is my goal, I guess, is what I'm sharing.
It's vital, we all agree.
Yeah, yeah.
There's a problem. It needs to be resolved, and I think the one takeaway would be, the lower bridge interchange didn't allow for northbound access. Couldn't be done.
Yeah, no, it is, yeah.
And then, it's done, and then you had, you had the entire community of Crooked River Ranch against that plan. As soon as that plan was presented and adopted, Crooked River Ranch complaints went away. And that's why we've seen the meetings, the population in the meetings dropping and dropping, and we're scared to death that, you know, with the planning commission, we had less than 100 people, and usually we're around 300. I'm fearful of what you're going to see just because of how people feel like, we've talked, we've talked, it doesn't matter anymore, we're not being listened to. Not that, and ODOT's trying, I'm not criticizing, I'm not, you know, trying to throw them under the bus, but there are, you know, like I say, you, I was trained on highway design, there's that cookie-cutter approach, but if you just think a little bit outside the box, like was done at the lower bridge interchange, there are solutions that can be, can be found that the community can get behind.
We'll see you Monday night. Monday night, any comments?
No, I do agree with you where the Lapine overpass, they did spend 17 million, and they didn't do their drill. So, definitely what you're pointing out, and I've been to a lot of the meetings, so, and I talked to people and heard from a lot of people about it, so try and stand on top of it.
The community believes in that, and by you being, showing up in force at times in different, you know, I've been, I hear that all the time, it's how much they appreciate your efforts and energies, and why I'm here today is to try to get one more time before, that way it won't take up to 20-some minutes.
You got us thinking about it, but Monday night's the big...
So, be sure and tell everyone to come Monday night, that we want to hear from them.
Do my best.
And, yes, and it's, it's worth it for them to come, public hearing.
Yeah.
Thank you so much for letting me, thanks for letting me go over.
Yep, thanks. All right, our next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Any questions? Exceptions, et cetera, anything you want to take in?
I just wanted to talk about item five, that's possible. I just had one question.
River mitigation one, okay. And then, the add-on issue, I didn't actually took home, I guess, the old packet, I didn't really see the...
Deschutes County Sheriff's Office AED replacement with a justice grant, a...
I guess I didn't, I didn't see that.
Yeah.
Let me just...
Yeah, that's that one, okay. So, it's on the consent agenda, so we may just slip through this, but we'll see.
Yeah, I just hadn't seen it because it was, I took home the pack before it was revised, I guess, so...
Thank you for adding it on. We have a deadline for it.
Okay, yeah, no problem with that. Okay, and then, I have not reviewed the July 29 minutes. I was trying to this morning, but the meeting I had before this meeting went over, so...
So, poll item number nine.
Poll item number nine for today, so...
And five.
And five, we'll move to the action item, action item list.
Okay.
With that, I'll move approval.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
Commissioner Adair?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes.
So, you're all set, came and went already then. All done.
So, we've approved that the justice...
It was on the consent agenda, yeah.
Yeah.
I think they're, they're both on there. Nope, they're both on there.
Yep.
It's your lucky day.
So, the first item, let's see, polled item number...
Five.
Five.
I just wanted to ask Sacra one question.
Okay.
Good morning, Commissioner Sacra Heck, Associate Planner in the Community Development Department, and also the Staff Lead Zone for the Mitigation and Enhancement Committee. And I can, I provided a memo, I believe was provided to you, not in the agenda packet, but outside of that. Happy to provide an overview or answer any questions that you might have.
I just had one question.
Okay.
I was just curious why it's August 21st or something today, and this is like a three-year term, but it's from February 28th. Why did it take so long for this to come up for us, for our signature?
Yeah.
I mean, there's got to be a history there, and I just want to understand it.
Yeah, no, I appreciate you asking that. The Mitigation and Enhancement Committee has not met regularly over the past couple of years, so they've had members that have been, or their direction the last time they met, about two years ago, was that the, the, trying to be brief here without going into too much detail, but the, the committee decided that they didn't need to meet as often because the, the direction of the program was to support full funding of ODFNW's mitigation or monitoring programs. And so, the, the, I, since I took over this position as an Associate Planner in Long Range about two years ago, I have checked in with the Mitigation Enhancement Committee to say, "Hey, what's the status? Do we need to meet? Do we need to discuss anything?" And the last time I was able to get the whole committee to meet was about two months ago. So, it, that's the, the reason for it taking so long, is that they don't meet regularly, and we've finally been able to pull the, the full team together, and they're technically, as you noted, the committee assignments, or their terms expired in February.
Okay, great.
So, this is bringing it up, up to speed.
Okay, thank you, thank you for being so conscientious...
Yeah.
...to not lose it.
Yeah.
So, I have a follow-up into what you just said, then. It said, I think, in your packet, you've done over, or this, the money from, basically, it's the money from their dam, Central Oregon Irrigation District's dam, power plant, ends up being spent on enhancement, fish and habitat enhancement projects. There've been over 60 of them, have they just not done any for the last couple of years, or you're not being asked to talk about them, and doesn't it generate money every year? And so, isn't there a building fund of money?
Yeah, yeah. So, the, the story there is that initially, so this committee has been in existence since the late 1980s.
Eighty-nine.
Initially, the, the funds were directed to enhancement projects, and then with the, the situation, my understanding, and, you know, I'll note that I'm, I'm no fishery expert here, so, take, you know, I provide an overview here. The, my understanding is the, the committee and ODFNW recognize that piecemeal enhancement projects weren't actually effective. In some argument, they were wasting money by putting in gravel that when the irrigation season came around would just be washed away with the higher flow. And because our Deschutes River fluctuates so much and, and the, the CFS volumes of the river, and so, the past couple of years, the committee recognized that actually the, the best bang for the buck, as it stands now with the current situation on the Deschutes River, is to support ODFNW's monitoring efforts. So, they're actually, ODFNW's having fish biologists out there doing fish counts and figuring out what the flows, what the impact of the flows are on their fish habitat. And then ideally, once the, all the powers that be get a better idea of, of the impact of the flows, or they can stabilize those, those flows more, then they can, they can start funding actual enhancement projects. So, it's, it's sort of, they realize, you know, what, what, what's the most impact they can have with their limited resources there.
And so, how long will they be building up this, or are they just paying ODFNW every year, or what of the...
Yeah, so they're, the, the fee that COID pays based on the revenues generated from the hydro power plant is about 90,000 a year, and so that supports a full-time employee at ODFNW to conduct the, the review, the monitoring efforts of the, of the fish in the basin. And they're...
How long are they going to monitor before they decide to do something productive?
That, that's a good question, I think, in the, the next year or two, I think they're really hoping to have a stabilized water flow and thus do some more enhancement projects.
So, the other comment I add is, this is an example of a kind of, there's nobody, it says we have two members at large, but one of the members, and she's very smart, Kate Fitzpatrick, who chaired the Basin Study Work Group, or, I don't know if she chaired it, but she was a major part of it, is from the Deschutes River Conservancy, and then Patrick Griffiths from the City of Bend, so really, it's all government employees, and then he, you know, there's nobody, just citizens at large, really. It's, it's all people with an interest in the river very specifically, which it's too late to do anything about that, but in the future, I think we should think about that because, I mean, it's got a lot of government, and then people are just specific, but I know that's the goal of the committee, but it just seems like there's kind of missing the rest of the population, so, that's just a comment.
Well, and I support getting this committee back on track with these appointments, that's what we're doing today, and then, yeah, work session someday, kind of whoever wants to come in and talk about it, and this is, it's valuable, just every few years at least for, especially a dynamic of, you know, commissioners, just to get up to speed on what they're doing, what they're thinking.
Absolutely, we could schedule a work session with, with some of the members and provide more overview and what their thoughts are.
Okay.
Great.
All right, I think we, so we're looking for a motion to approve board signature...
I move that we approve board signature on letters reappointing Amy Stewart, Patrick Griffiths, and Derek Staub to the Deschutes River Mitigation and Enhancement Committee.
And I'll second it.
Okay, any further discussion? Commissioner Adair?
Yes.
Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. So, our next item on the action agenda is consideration of Chair Signature Document Number 2019, Day 620 IGA for CDBG funds for Central Oregon Regional Collaborative.
Good morning, Board. Joining me this morning is Andrew Spreadborough from Neighbor Impact. Andrew is the Deputy Executive Director of Strategy and Operations. I'll provide an overview of this topic, and then Andrew will provide more detail about the grant application. To begin with, Commissioner Adair actually hit the nail on the head this morning at the beginning of the meeting, talking about the homelessness and the challenges our community faces. And one of the, one of the most effective ways of addressing homelessness is to prevent people from becoming homeless. And programs such as a housing preservation loan program, which provides loans to low-income homeowners to repair their homes, is what this program is, is all about. For, for, for discussion and consideration this morning is a grant application to Business Oregon for CDBG funds. To provide some general background, the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, or HUD, provides community development block grants to communities to support low and moderate income populations. HUD provides some, provides the CDBG funds through two main mechanisms. One is a direct appropriation to entitlement communities. Based on, on the size of cities and counties, we have two entitlement, two entitlement communities in Central Oregon, being the cities of Bend and Redmond. For non-entitlement communities, HUD provides CDBG funds to state entities, and then there's a competitive grant process. In the state of Oregon, the CDBG funds are provided to Business Oregon, and then Business Oregon runs a competitive grant process, and that's what we're here to, to discuss this morning. For Central Oregon, Neighbor Impact is proposing to apply for the CDBG grant funds under a regional collaborative. If successful, the grant funds would be used for Neighbor Impact's housing preservation loan program, and Andrew can provide more details about that. And this collaborative is open to the cities of Lapine, Madras, Prineville, and the three counties, including Deschutes County. So, really, the question for the, the board this morning is whether or not the board wants Deschutes County to be part of the collaborative, and then that collaborative will support Neighbor Impact's grant application. And for residents to be eligible for these funds, the entities have to, have to sign the IGA, which is essentially more of a support letter. There is a draft IGA in the board's packet. This is the first time this has come before the board, so there is time if the board wants to think about whether or not the board wants to participate in this, in this IGA, and there's also time if the board has suggestions on changes to the IGA. The actual grant application is, is due in, I think it's late September. But with that, I'll have Andrew talk a little bit, little bit more about the housing preservation loan program and about the process.
Great, well, thank you, Commissioners. Again, my name is Andrew Spreadborough, I'm with Neighbor Impact, and we're a regional nonprofit organization that supports low and moderate income populations, who do a lot of work on behalf of those populations and provide housing services, home weatherization, home rehab loans, early childhood programs, who run the, the regional food bank system, so a lot of work in that, that venue. And I think Eric gave a great summary of what we're working on today. We have an opportunity as a region to apply for this community development block grant funding to recapitalize Neighbor Impact's lending program. A couple of things I'd add is, first off, only cities or counties can apply for these funds, and the City of Prineville has agreed to serve as a grant applicant. We've worked closely with City of Prineville and other community development block grant applications, and so, they're going to serve that purpose for this project. If it's awarded, they'll sub-grant those funds to Neighbor Impact to actually operate the program. Neighbor Impact operates currently a, a home rehab lending program among a couple other different lending programs. Common theme is they do all support low and moderate income populations. Our lending program originally started around 2000 to 2002, and it was really capitalized initially through this community development block grant fund program. Neighbor Impact, in partnership with jurisdictions throughout the region, applied from 2001 through 2009, and just nearly every year got a grant and slowly over time capitalized that lending program. And we're still revolving those funds today. We've got $2 million out on loan to homeowners for housing rehab projects. And so, this is our first, I guess, attempt to add funding back into that loan program mix. We can apply for a maximum of $400,000. Our thought is, if successful, and if we continue to loan these dollars, we would apply in subsequent years and continue to kind of grow that base. I think philosophically, Eric's right, I mean, we look at housing, I think no one would argue that housing is not one of the highest needs in the region, if not the highest, it really has a ripple effect throughout the economy, and I think we view this as just a tool in the toolbox, it's just another way of supporting housing in the region. We know that there is a high demand for these sorts of programs. Typically, you know, a typical story for a borrower of this loan program is, I don't have the exact breakdown, but typically, they're seniors or people on fixed incomes. These are unbankable populations, those that can't just go to a bank and get a loan because they either have very low income, or they have bad credit, often it's a combination. We tend to do loans for health and safety repairs, I think water, sewer, septic is the most common type of projects, but we also do roof projects, siding, HVAC systems, just the, the wide gamut of types of projects. One kind of nice thing about this program is, since it's funded originally with grant proceeds, we're able to really limit our, our kind of costs associated with maintaining this program. Most of the loans are structured as deferred loans, meaning that we make the loan and the homeowner doesn't need to make payments back, they don't need to repay the loan until the property exchanges hands. And this is a population that can't just afford a monthly payment on a loan. But it also allows us to recapture those, those loan proceeds and relend over time. So, with that, I'll pause, happy to answer any questions. Again, there's specific requests is around this IGA. Eric's exactly right, it doesn't compel the county to action, what it does is expresses support of the county, and by... What it does is expresses support of the county, and by signing on county residents outside of the City of Bend that are income-eligible, would be eligible to apply for a loan.
Questions?
Okay. What is like the average loan size?
Average is around $30,000. I think that's what we've seen.
So you could go through the $400,000 very rapidly then, couldn't you?
Yeah.
Did the $400,000 go up this last year in the maximum that you could apply for?
I think that's been the maximum for a while. I haven't looked back in in previous years, but it's usually in that range. Again, I think the idea would be if the demand is proven to be high as we anticipate, that we would apply again in a year or two years. One of the kind of required elements of the application is to try to document the demand. I mean, the state's interest is getting these funds out the door quickly, and they want to get them out to good projects, and their concern is to, you know, if they're going to make a grant of these loan dollars, they want to see that there's a demand. So we've done a little bit of work. It's really delicate to try to build a wait list because we don't have the funds secured, but we're building an interest list, and we have over forty homeowners that have expressed interest. We haven't kind of assigned costs to each of those projects, but, you know, you could do the math real quickly, you know, ten or fifteen are going to take it up. So we know the demand is there for sure, and this is just gets us part of the way there.
Okay, great.
So you said you have a interest list of forty homeowners. Is that the entire three-county region?
Yeah, and some are in Bend and Redmond. I mean, we we put an open call out for for interest, and a number of those are Bend and Redmond residents. I don't have the exact breakdown, but there are quite a few in Madras, Prineville, Lapine, areas outside of the cities of Bend and Redmond, and Deschutes County as well.
So is there a allocation formula between cities, or how do you prioritize the requests?
We don't. It'll be a first come, first served. We don't earmark a portion to each community. In part, that is a state requirement. They don't want to see funds being held back for one community when there's need elsewhere and there are people ready to borrow. So we we couldn't propose that and be awarded for funding even if we wanted to.
Does Prineville get an advantage by the fact that it's based there? I mean, I mean, I I would think, I mean, if you're spending thirty, like you said, thirty thousand, that's like twelve projects or something, thirteen projects.
Yep. I think the, there's no advantage to the city. Matter of fact, they're taking on responsibility for the entire grant, and they're doing this on behalf of the region, and I think their expectation is if we apply in the future, maybe another jurisdiction might take that, take that responsibility. But I think they see the advantage of making this available to their population. I think, again, we have an interest list. I don't know if all of them are eligible. We'll go through, I mean, you know, it's it's an interest list at this Board.
Does-
But but if we are awarded the grant, it's our intention to work closely with cities and counties to help get the word out to their populations.
Yeah.
And so part of it is, you know, how successful can we be at outreach to certain communities to generate that interest in those applicants?
Who, how, who do you work with for contractors? Do the individuals get their own contractor?
They select their own, yeah.
And is there an administrative fee or something that gets paid to-
There is no fees to the borrower. Part of the grant is that the State of Oregon builds in kind of project management dollars that allow Neighbor Impact to pay staff to process the applications and so forth. So that's not charged to the homeowner. There are grant administration and project management funds built into the grant though.
It's just kind of surprising because the typical client or service you said was was like repairing a septic or sewer system or a roof, well, you'd have to have a big house for a big system to spend thirty thousand on either of those. So that's, I mean, that doesn't, those are like $10,000 jobs. So I'm wondering how it averages thirty and we get more, I mean, those, thirty thousand's quite a bit of money for a project. Any thoughts on that, or are they doing multiple-
I don't work in the lending program, so I can't go into great detail. That's an average.
I mean, that's a lot.
I think we do, the septic's are not, yeah.
No, I, I'm a builder. I've done, I mean, an alternate system, brand new, would cost you seventeen thousand. That's the high-end technology. So that's, and a roof would have to be pretty big to redo a whole roof. I mean, it's, they do it in about three days, so anyway, interesting. Okay. Questions?
So this is adding to an existing pool of dollars that has, this is an ongoing program. It's just adding more resources to it. Right, yes, that's that's right. So the original grants that we applied for received a decade ago or so have become defederalized. So a lot of the the requirements have been removed. We still have to operate it as for the same purpose, and and we are, and those funds, for the most part, are out on loan. We do get some repayments, and we're still accepting applications, et cetera.
How big is the existing fund?
It's roughly $2 million.
Oh, okay.
It's out on, again, most out on loan. We've got probably a little bit available for applicants currently.
So and when the property sells, then the fund is replenished?
Correct.
With, just the, without interest in?
There's, there is interest charged. It's not compounding interest. It's a simple interest approach where it's just, you know, interest is charged each year based on just the set original loan amount. It's not compounding over time.
Okay.
What, it's referred to as a collaborative, and is this a formal organization, or is this a legal term of art, or what?
I mean, really, you know, this intergovernmental agreement template was provided by the state, so a lot of the terminology, this is requirement of the application, that we have an intergovernmental agreement that establishes the program geography and expresses support, so really borrowed liberally from the state's template, and that was their terminology. It has no special significance. It's not a legal entity.
Okay. Was there anything that legal had wanted in here that's not in here, or to protect our interests, or?
No, it's primarily an aspirational document. It's, as Andrew indicated, it's not creating an intergovernmental organization. It's just simply saying that these governmental entities are going to cooperate and coordinate with Neighbor Impact for the, you know, for those grant funds and the distribution. So it's, it's, there's nothing binding to it. The closest you come to is Section Four, that has some aspirational identification. Counties' responsibility include adherence to the objective that a hundred percent of the program funds serve low and moderate income. Certainly, that'd be something Neighbor Impact's going to make sure of. Ongoing marketing of the program, again, that's going to be some sort of a way of getting that message out, I would again assume through Neighbor Impact, and then-
And through our community development department. I know they work closely with referrals.
Yeah. Somebody, great.
I'm supportive of it. I know the administration, I know Secretary Carson's interested in these kinds of projects. They're trying to do more of it, so interesting if we get more dollars. Just interesting to get a report back after, if you get it, and then how it's, you know, used and that sort of thing, so.
Absolutely. Be happy to do that.
Thanks for coming today.
Now, with actually a breakdown where where the funds go by county or location, yeah, so we actually see what's happening, and if if we do need to add for, ask for more money for it, because we do want to keep people in their home, and if this makes a difference.
Tom?
Yeah. Commissioners, thank you. As you may recall, we fund a kind of a subset of this program through, in the South County for septic loans, for ATT replacements, similar, I think probably the same eligibility requirements for homeowners down there that's been pretty successful over the years. So just mention, if you're going to supply report, it would be useful also to have some information on how that program is working also in terms of capitalization and volume and so forth. I would note, and I'm sure Nick would concur, that this program, both parts, the one, the county funds and the and the general one, have been very helpful in code enforcement cases over the year to provide a resource for property owners to be able to make repairs on their property that are in code violation, such as a failing septic, where they really don't have the means to be able to accomplish the repair. So it's been a good, I think, collaborative partnership with Neighbor Impact over the years on both programs and provide some direct benefit, not only to the property owners, but also to the county.
Motion to support. Chair's signature of this document?
I move we have Chair's signature of document number 2019-620 IGA for the CDBG funds for Central Oregon Regional Collaborative.
And I'll second it.
Any further comments? Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
Chair Boches? Yes. Thanks, Eric, and thanks, Andrew.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yep. We're a little bit behind. I think it was all due to citizen input, but, next we'll have the Chair's signature of document number 2019-627 IGA for juvenile basic and diversion services. D.V. Holcomb, Holcomb.
Good morning.
Morning.
D.V. Holcomb, Community Justice. We do seek your review and then approval of Chair's signature on our document return summary for our intergovernmental agreement with the State of Oregon, the Oregon Youth Authority, which administers the Basic and Diversion Grant Program. Would you like a little overview of the program and what we're planning to do?
Hmm.
Okay, great. So this is a biennial formula allocation that every county receives, and it has two parts. First is basic, and that is for juvenile departments to perform basic juvenile services. There aren't a lot of specific requirements on what we can or cannot do with that. We primarily spend much of it on functional family therapy for youth who are newer to the juvenile system, and we also use it to provide medical services in detention. The other portion of the funding that comes to us is called diversion, and that refers to diversion from state youth correctional facilities. So that portion of the money comes with a few more strings and requirements. Basically, youths who you use those funds for need to be at high risk of entering the state youth correctional facility. So in general, they're very high-risk youths. They have to be adjudicated in juvenile court of an A misdemeanor or more serious, so felonies or a very serious misdemeanor. We do use those funds for FFT as well, for some of those higher-end youth. And then we also use it to prevent out-of-home placement with a program called Intercept, which is run by youth villages. It's a sort of a twenty-four-hour, in-home, intensive counseling and support service for for families where the youth is maybe about to be removed from the home. We use the money for a few other ancillary things, like interpretation for Spanish language and FFT. We're going to be using some of the money on a study to make sure that our detention risk assessment is valid. It's a biennial grant, so we get it reimbursement-based. So every quarter we submit what we have spent, we get reimbursed from the state. But the biennial agreement is for the full two years for the full amount.
So I noticed that it went up like almost nine percent. Were you guys surprised?
We were when we heard. It was one of the few state grants that we were aware of at the time of budgeting, actually, that was going to be higher, and for whatever reason, the legislature held that poll. So, yeah, we were surprised.
I know. I was like, well, that was a pretty big increase.
Yeah, it was. About $70,000 over the biennium, yeah.
Yes, but, yeah, almost, almost nine percent.
Yeah, it was great.
So are are the numbers growing, then, of of youth in Deschutes County that you're dealing with?
Um, yes and no, could be. In some cases, that that percentage increase really just helps us with, like, FFT is primarily personnel costs, it's pretty much the full, so, you know, those prices go up each year, as you all know, so some of that goes there. And we're also able to use some additional funding like that, Spanish interpretation. We had a definite increase in families who required interpretation, so that money did help a lot with funding that need.
No questions. This is kind of the biannual, you know, outcome of the state legislative process for budgeting.
So what's your position at Juvenile, or the Juvenile Community Justice Department?
Well, I work for Community Justice, so that's both adult and juvenile, and my title's the same, which is, I think official title is Business Manager.
Business Manager.
Mm-hmm.
I guess, I don't know what I should do. I really have no sense of how many people you're providing services for, what you're doing with those services, et cetera. And I'd like to see some more of that before we go forward with this. One of the things that struck me when we, I think it was during our budget meetings or sometime, when Mr. Hales was in here, he said basically there's nine people in in juvenile detention, and there's, we have three people at a time taking care of those nine people, and it just seems very, it doesn't seem like detention's a very big part of it anymore, and we have that big facility. So I'd like to know a little more about the numbers of people. And I'm going to say that, you know, I I don't know whether I should vote or not. My own personal dealings, I know more about it through personal dealings, which have been relatively unsatisfactory, so I don't, whether I should just abstain from this vote or what, but I, I'd like to know more about the, what the department's doing, because we haven't really, I mean, I did a briefing when I first came on Board as a Commissioner, but I really don't get any sense of, and I didn't say anything in here in terms of numbers. I know there's, you can look at the budget and see how many employees you have, but I don't have a sense really of the numbers of people at juvenile. I notice even in the budget book this year, we didn't have any summary of what the juvenile department did. So I personally want to know some more, and I don't know if it's the business manager or the, do we still have the same person as the head of the juvenile department? So maybe it's some explanations about what the money's really, you know, it said that a lot goes to family counseling, and I, and I don't know if you're doing any, I'd like to kind of know more about results, whether other families, what their experiences are, and that sort of thing. I don't know if you do any testing of that or monitoring of that, or, you know, I just don't have any sense of that. I see the agreement that we're supposed to enter to, and I know the state's given the money, I see that. That's just where I am on it. I don't know if you, that's, the Commissioners joined me in that, actually, because I don't think we've had a real report on what's being done. And I was just struck with that number, that we have three people taking care of nine, you know, on a twenty-four-hour clock, so it becomes nine people a day, supervising nine people a day. It just seems like a, I don't know, I don't understand that really.
Well, and I'd be supportive of, you know, just learning about numbers. You know, I'm thinking this, this would be separate than that. I do support, you know, signing the document, you know, making the IGA between the state, you know, finalize right now and then proceeding. We do have juvenile detention. It's evolved. You remember, we built this facility with multiple units, and we basically backed off, and this is long-term. Before my time, the building was finalized, we went from, what, two units to ones since I've been in here, referring to the kind of the pods, juvenile.
There's four, Bill, yeah.
Yep.
So I'm not sure what, if it's all just a kind of a counseling-
So the population has changed, and, yeah.
You know, I just wonder what the, what it's really doing if there's only that many people, and we have, I mean, how much counseling and how's it overlap with our, you know, other counseling and-
Public Safety Coordinating Council would be a great place, because there's a lot of folks there that could, you know, just, it could be a topic that comes up, and okay, let's start with the numbers, you know, daily, weekly, monthly, people, you know, engaged in the system and then go from there. So as I say, we can look at numbers, yeah.
What's the timeline for, I mean, you've, this is la, the budget was approved by the legislature or by the, yeah?
Yeah, and if I could, I don't, I believe that for various reasons, the Commission was unable to do our annual departmental visit that you do from time to time, and so, I mean, if you're interested, we are more than interested and happy to have that conversation. And it can be just with Commissioner Henderson, or if the others are interested, we're more than happy to do so.
It doesn't really just-
We can present, or we can answer specific questions.
Or a joint, yeah. I just, I've been over two and a half years, and I don't really have a sense, and we go through the Health Department, we've had lots of meetings, and we hear about who they're serving, what they're doing.
Yeah.
And I just don't see it here, and so.
No, I appreciate that.
Well, good discussion. As I say, I would support this document today, so we'll see where this goes, but I'll move Chair's signature of document number 2019-627 IGA for juvenile basic and diversion services.
And I'll second signing the document.
Any further discussion?
I, I think it would be important. I know I did do a tour of the facility, and I remember the story about the girl who finally read her first book ever and said that she was in the pod, that it was the best food she'd ever eaten. And when you hear those kind of stories, it really does, you don't forget it, and you think, oh, my gosh. Anyway, she was, she was leaving Oregon to go live with her grandfather, and hopefully that's a successful, you know, that's happening now. So, but I do think I'm coming back and seeing, what actually are we doing? I really appreciated what was going on in Marion County. They have a gardening project, they sell plants through their juvenile program, and they have a coffee shop, and the kids are there waiting on you and working with you, and I thought that was really like a positive experience, you know, teaching those kids responsibility and everything. So, you know, we can always, I would think we should really take a look and see what we're doing.
Okay. Further discussion?
Commissioner?
Yeah.
I would just note that- I would just note that, you know, we were, as Devi said, she was referencing the commissioner tours that we actually suspended following Commissioner Dare's orientation, because we didn't want to be repetitive, but we're happy to get those going again. I think perhaps an outline of the department to start with, a written outline that we can just give to you, and then with some options on whether you would like to do a tour of the facility, as well as hear about the operations, or just doing it in a work session, whatever your pleasure is, we're happy to set it up.
Yeah, I think that'd be good. I think we've all, or I've been through the facility, I don't really have questions about that. I'm more interested in knowing numbers and services, and I'd like to know what they do to monitor effectiveness, both with the, most people that are juveniles also have families, so there's the victims of the juveniles as well. So just all that sort of thing, more, I know, at least personally, I know the physical layout. I don't know if that's as important to me, but anyway, okay. So any other comments? Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
And Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
The Chair's going to abstain.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So next item is non-resource, non-prime resource lands amendment update, Deschutes County Luba remand, check in.
Another easy one.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. For the record, Peter Gatawski, Deschutes County Planning. Recognize that this is an awkward, awkward topic. Yesterday, we provided an update to the commission and to Bend City Council highlighting the Luba remand and its implications to Deschutes County's proposed non-resource land amendments. In the memo that's before you, we've provided some options for your consideration. We are cer, I can certainly go through those options. The commission may want to have a conversation about the Luba remand specifically, so.
Your thing.
Happy to.
Douglas County's remand.
I'm sorry, did I misspoke?
No, just the fact that it's not a remand of ours.
No, no, it's, yeah, it's the Douglas County remand that was issued in early August and was quite sweeping and somewhat unforeseen. So we, if you would like, we can share staff's thoughts about that, supplementing what was described in the memorandum. I just want to be mindful of your time and don't want to be repetitive, so whatever direction we can do to help prepare you for this discussion.
My suggestion would be, I mean, I already kind of know what I think, so each commissioner can ask whatever questions they want. I mean, you supplied a lot of information, you had a memo about our options, so I know what I think, so.
Well, and I kind of go to a big picture, and I mentioned a little bit yesterday, it's kind of the, just the state of land use in Oregon, and these are acute issues. We've been bouncing off of this kind of same subject, referring to, you know, what other options are there in the rural county for land use for 10 years? And, you know, the system is just set up where there's just some hard stops out there. So I'm starting to come to a conclusion, too, and, which would be, you know, with this new information, maybe we are backing off, but I don't want to set too much direction to this discussion right now.
So I have a question, then. Were you guys talking to Douglas County before this decision happened? I mean, you were working, you kind of, you knew what they were up against.
Commissioner Dare, Nick Lelec, Deschutes County Community Development Director, for the record, yes, we've been coordinating with Douglas County for years and years.
Way before me.
From the big look to the Southern Oregon Regional Pilot Project, through their current proposal, and just the late-breaking news that we have from late yesterday afternoon is that the Douglas County Board of Commissioners did direct their staff to initiate the remand and to re-adopt the remand addressing some of the issues. They don't want to, as their planning director shared with us, they didn't want to leave bad case law on the books, for lack of a better term, and they are, so they are proceeding. They're not withdrawing, they're not, just so, if that's helpful as you consider.
No, that's good information.
Your options, just so you have all the information.
If I may, just to provide context, so based on recent legislation, when there's a Luba remand, the local government has 180 days.
Right.
To initiate it. So that's six months, and then they have to render a final local decision within 120 days. So, you know, you're looking at 10 months out, and then, you know, it's highly likely that Doug, the friends of Douglas County, thousand friends of Oregon, I certainly don't want to speak for the state departments that appealed this, the original decision, but it's very likely that one or both of those advocacy groups will appeal it again because the stakes are so high. So you're looking at 18 months from getting a refined decision on this matter, and so just to put, you know, a temporal context into Douglas County's circumstance, it's not going to be an imminent reconsideration.
Other questions or?
Okay, so you were saying, before you knew Douglas County was going to keep working on it and not just withdrawing, going to a corner and leave us with this, that you said options three, four, or five were what we should be considering? The board options?
Yes, I mean, Commissioner, I'm, Nick and I co-wrote the memorandum, and again, we are rarely in this position where we are wanting to get in front of the board on a significant policy issue. We introduced those as options for your consideration that we thought were the most legally defensible and most comprehensive, but by all means, there are certainly, you know, other paths to go forward. You could, as the first option notes, if there was interest, you could direct us to continue to go forward with our amendments, recognizing that we would need to reopen the hearing before the Planning Commission to take, you know, testimony on the Douglas County Luba remand. I anticipate we would need to do significant amendments to the proposal, to the policies, and certainly update our burden of proof. The other options, as noted, would be to, there's an opportunity to take, to mobilize Association of Oregon County Representatives and affected counties and engage the Land Conservation Development Commission next month in Tigard. They are, as mentioned yesterday and summarized in the memo, they're going to be contemplating finalizing their work plan. And this board has been consistent over the years. Whenever we've had a chance to engage on non-resourced land opportunities, this board has explicitly expressed a desire for clarity. So, of course, that's, that's an option that can be blended into any of the others. And then the third that we introduced was, you know, there's an opportunity to apply for a technical assistance grant that, and one interpretation of the Luba decision is that to really consider non-resourced lands in a system that has 19 statewide planning goals, and in this case, a lot of ambiguity, that the opportunity to evaluate non-resourced lands is to look at it in relationship to other notable land use elements in our comprehensive plans, so you can ensure that goals and policies that relate to forest lands or agricultural lands or other classifications explicitly address the relationship with non-resourced lands. So we, in that fifth option, we acknowledge that TA grant could provide a foundation for developing a work plan for 2020 that, you know, if the board is so inclined, provides a basis to begin talking about a comprehensive plan update. So those were, we understand that all of those may not be perfect, but we just wanted to be honest in our assessment based on this decision.
So my feeling about it is pretty strong, I guess, at this point. I do like the idea of applying for a technical assistance grant and seeing if there's any chance that we could get that. I don't know exactly how much that is or what it allows us, but I don't think we can really go forward without any partners at some state level. I was really struck by the decision that it just hammers home, the fact that most of us in the state don't really have any say in the state, in the state policy. I mean, you got a thousand friends of Oregon, you have whatever local land use watchdog group there is, and whatever county you live in, and you have, but when you have ODFW opposing things, and you have LCDC opposing things, and a ruling on it, I just, it just kind of closes the book. I think there's real distinguishable things. I thought their plan was less likely to get through than ours because of what they really were trying to do. I mean, they're not, and they also were not obviously very thorough in proving the points. I mean, maybe they didn't know they had to prove this connection to the regional housing things, and they didn't, you know, there was all these points in the decision that we could get, do better with now that we know those are points about, you know, the hazard zones, the, yeah, the, you know, all the wastewater, the, but, you know, at the end of the day, Luba was, it seems to me, was really looking forward to just putting a hard hammer down. And you could almost, if you go back to the whole past of it, it almost was like it was a system built to lose because the three county, knowing what I know now, when they did the three county study in Southern Oregon, that would be a good way to make sure you didn't get progress, is get three different counties with very strong opinions themselves, supposedly working together on one thing, and then it doesn't work out, so we have that to point to. It just, it just seems like there's nobody at the state level that really cares about this stuff. And I, unless we can get some local advocacy, I think we're really tracking alone. So my view is we should step back from, take some thoughts on it. I had wanted to go last month to the Land Conservation Commission and bring it up, because I'd seen that they were ready to abandon the whole idea. But that itself shows that the seven people on the board already want to abandon it, you know, they don't even, they don't care. So they don't even know what, you know, they're, it's a very pro. So I do, we are going to meet with one of the members, and I'd like to find out a little bit about what that member's thoughts are about land issues, but I just, for me, I just don't feel like we should keep spending money right now. We ought to wait and kind of regroup. That's my feeling. What do you think?
One of the things that I was reminded of yesterday, meeting with the city council, is what a big project and process and the expense associated with urban growth expansion of the city of Bend. So now we have reasonable proposals, trying to do some rural rezoning, many years after statewide land use was put in, and we have these complicated, expensive systems in place for UGB expansion. Which is it? You know, are we putting people in the cities or not in the cities? So, and the conclusion, as I say, I start to come, is there is, there's a small people, a group of people that is holding tight on all this, and we really don't have much authority. It's a shame.
We should step back for a little bit.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, and whatever that looks like, you know, there's no need to lean into this right now, you know, maybe bring it around as a work item to be planned for, prepared for the next cycle, you know, let's think about what another cycle would look like.
Oh, well, I'm always like an optimist, and at least let them know at this meeting at Tigard that, you know what, maybe we had to step back, but we really don't want to step back, but we're forced to at this time, but that it really, you know, it says it's recommending a discontinuation. There's such a serious issue in our state, and I'm so tired of the, what, three people on the board from Portland that are, you know, that's what they're doing, they're running the state. And I do believe that we need some recognition, so I, you know, okay, if we did step back, but I still think we should be part of that, and I think we should start talking to AOC people, and, you know, it's like.
You know, I have, over the last, I mean, from the day I got elected, I've kind of talked with, and there, it is a problem in other counties, it's not just ours. Most every county in the state has some area that they could.
They could use some help.
Develop more easily, that really doesn't impact farmer forests, but that, you know, until you have people that think goal is 11 is housing?
10.
10. Goal 10 is as important as goal three and four, then we're never going to get anywhere. And nobody, and the ruling class doesn't think that. The ruling class thinks that, and the ruling people think that three and four is everything. I mean, we have 2 million people more than we had when they put it in, and it's, you know, it impacts us all.
But I do think, the technical grant, I think we should do that, too.
If that's a real thing, yeah, is that, how much, is that from Department of Land Conservation Development or?
Great question, Mr. Chairman. It's offered by the Department of Land Conservation and Development. I did speak with our regional representative. You are hitting on prominent themes. The technical assistance grant is emphasizing housing predominantly in cities. That's where the weight of the criteria is. Of course, there's a set aside of funds for the legislation that apply to those eastern Oregon counties, where they could look at economic opportunities for lands that are near their urban growth boundaries. The fifth priority in their ranking is to update a comprehensive plan. According to, again, this was an informal conversation, we may be well-served if we do get direction to apply for a TA grant, to have a representative of this board or designee engage the director at DLCD to respectfully underscore the importance of this type of TA grant, what it would mean for Deschutes County. I gathered that that's not an unusual act where local governments apply, and they, in their own language, in their own coordination meetings with representatives of DLCD are able to articulate firsthand the benefits of their application. So it seemed like, you know, that type of involvement by possibly the chairman or a designee, administration, or, you know, the director, wouldn't hurt to try to give us some separation from this emphasis on the missing middle, you know, middle income housing, you know, the implementation of their, the new rules that require higher-density dwelling units outright in residentially zoned areas in cities. So there's, it seems like, from what, again, what I'm hearing is the governor, the legislature, DLCD, I think LCDC is hearing that as well, is that there's this emphasis on housing, and as you articulated or implied, the way the system is structured, housing is anticipated to be, you know, predominantly in urban growth boundaries. So that's giving you context for the TA grant. I mean, it's not a high-ranked proposal, but it's worth, maybe worth it still applying.
Just a thought, kind of jumping a little bit here. You know, housing, high-density housing in urban areas, that's just a slice of housing. You know, semi-rural living, owning two vehicles, a boat and a camp trailer, you just don't do that in some of these high-density housing. So, as I say, that's part of it, and, you know, later in life, I'll probably want to downsize, and I won't mind living in an apartment where I don't have to shovel snow, but not everybody wants that one narrow path. And as I say, this is just statements to the world here. So the mix is very important. It's amazing that there seems to be one guidance.
Yeah, well, and we've said this for a couple, several years, the same theme. I mean, there's lots of people that don't want to live in density, and they don't want to give up their cars either, and there just seems to be this planning group of Oregon that thinks that's the way we all should live, and it's just not how we're going to. It'd be my guess, so.
When I was in college, I sold a vehicle, bought a bicycle, and lived in a small apartment. I lived that lifestyle for a while.
Yeah.
But not right now.
And you can do that when you go to work or school, you know, there. But when you, so that's the big, huge debate, but I just, yeah, I see, and we've said it repeatedly.
Resonates right now.
As a goal, as, and I don't really think it, what I see missing in the state debate is what's just practical, where we're protecting land that really isn't in the forest, pretending it is, and it's.
For other purposes.
And so we're wiping out farming, farmland in places like Willamette Valley around Portland, or Western County's being, you know, taken up, but we have lots of land that isn't as farmable, that isn't farmable, and it puts all the cost on the private parties. I just, you know, I think we should regroup and think about it a little bit. Is there a post, is there a timeline we're under for these amendments? Could we talk about these decisions? I mean, we could make a record that hits a lot of these, and I think our situation's way different than what they were doing. They really wanted to be able to sell land in rural areas and build houses, and I don't think it was really at all like what we're really talking about. So there's a lot of differences, but I, I don't know, it seems like we need to get, figure out if there's any angle forward with LCDC or somebody.
Well, and then we have NPR 10, which is trying to, you know, provide some zone for those existing parcellized neighborhood examples. for those existing parcellized neighborhood examples we have, but that runs into the same roadblock because that's cracking the door open that could be taking another step, and so you can see why that's, there's so much resistance on that first little step even.
So will they be now going to the Oregon Court of Appeals, Douglas County?
Douglas County is, is rather than appealing Luba's decision to the Court of Appeals, instead, they're going to initiate the remand. They're going to look at the decision.
Okay, they're going to improve the case.
Address the issues that have been raised by Luba.
Yeah, and there's, and there's things they could do. They obviously didn't meet all the tests. Kind of like, well, what was the one where we did where we, we didn't do an easy analysis? And so they, so, well, we better do any, you know, so we better prove up some more things, and, but it, I'm concerned, there just doesn't seem much comment or respect for housing as an equal goal, and, and I don't really get that. And so it's like, are they, there's two goals that are in bold and everything else is not, or what is it? I mean, it's, it's really, the more we talk about these things, it seems like that's the case.
Then you have, you guys have to think, I mean, I'm a country person, but the Hughes family are billionaires because of public storage. So there's all these people that do live in, you know, in Portland, and they have their house, and they have to keep their boat somewhere, and they have to keep their Christmas decoration, you know, somewhere else. So, you know, we, you know, the state has taken that to where I don't, I don't want to go.
Well, the city, I mean, that's, the cities are doing that now, too. I mean, you're, oh, we're not going to provide parking for, you know, that's one of that new rules, you don't have to provide parking. So, oh, we're, we're not going to have cars? No, we're just, all just going to be jammed up, you know, and...
Drive around for half an hour looking for a park.
Looking for a spot, and it's just, you know, it's, we're doing pop, we're doing decisions that aren't based on how people really want to live, or my view, like you were saying, the rural.
Our view.
Well, it's a view of a lot of people. When we, they did the development, you know, up in, it's off-topic, but when they did Yarrow up in Madras, the developers that do Northwest Crossing were the primary planner, and they made it all Northwest Crossing sized lots in Madras, nobody wanted it. Every house that was built was built on multiple lots because they, they have their camper, their boat, their other rigs.
But just a little bit more.
They want a little more room, so it's just, it doesn't work for everybody.
So we're, this is, the implications are, we're, I mean, as I say, yeah, working on concluding here, but basically, the Planning Commission is asking for guidance, or maybe we're taking it away from the Planning Commission to kind of stop in the process right now. I was thinking through what we're doing here.
Yeah, it's a great question, Commissioner DeBonne. You could, you could table it, and we just, the text amendments are still, you know, on a back burner. The other option would just, would be formally withdrawing them, and we would submit a notice to the state of just such an effect, and...
Well, I'd like to table it. I'd like to table rather than withdraw it right now. I, I think we need to see if there's more support for it locally, and because, you know, it's not bad to be out in front of the band, but you don't want to be five blocks in front of it.
Yeah, so tabling is fine.
Is that all right with you, tabling?
And so I have heard support to initiate the grant application, which we can do. That's due in about five or six weeks, so we can get started on that. And I, while the emphasis is on housing in urban areas, I think we can make a compelling case, it's the fastest-growing county in the state, if not the Pacific Northwest and the West Coast, with a state agency asking us to update some inventories and, there's a lot of issues that I think we can make a compelling case. Number one, I think the other key question is, shall we draft a letter on behalf of the Board of Commissioners to respectfully request LCDC to keep rulemaking on the policy agenda for the next biennium that we can send to them at least a couple of weeks prior to their meeting, so they can consider that, and then also circulate, circulate that to other counties, so hopefully we can gain support. County Planning Directors have been discussing this issue now over the last couple of weeks because everybody sees the widespread ramifications of the Douglas County decision, and so more counties are now engaged, potentially asking LCDC to, to keep this on the policy agenda.
Well, and as I say, I see that as a path where, well, that makes sense, let's go do that. But is that really another brick wall that, you know, there's, and you mentioned, you know, a ruling class, I don't, you know, I don't know the terminology here, but is that really another brick wall? No matter what we do, it's still not going to go anywhere, but, so we should try it.
Yeah, I'd just soon pause for now myself, right?
On the rulemaking?
Yeah, well, even the letter and trying to engage the other counties, we can think about that, it's, the meeting's a ways off, but it just seems like, you know, one thing has become clear is that the city has lots of places to still develop. It's, we're trying to anticipate the future, and a lot of the focus, they are focusing a lot on hopefully some housing, so there is some things going forward. I don't know. I'd rather wait for now, we can think about it.
I would, I would, I want to do the letter. Remember, we hadn't had state police hired in like 40 years, and that just happened, so we, we can't just not address this issue. It's ridiculous.
To LCDC, are you?
Yeah, yeah, I think we should do a letter, and I, maybe they're going to ignore it, but we have to keep mentioning what's important in our county. It's our job.
Well, so I would support, you know, putting something together and then just bringing it back to a work session or whatever.
See what it is, yeah.
We don't even...
And I know that there's a timeline that's optimal to submit that type of testimony into LCDC's package.
What the timeline is?
I don't, I know that you're meeting with an LCDC commissioner this afternoon, so that person likely could give you a timeline, but we'll, we can certainly come back with, if not next week, the week after.
You can find it out Monday for our work session or something.
Yeah.
How timely.
Yeah, yeah.
It can't be this far out, I mean, we're not even...
No, the meeting, yeah, yeah, the meeting is September, I thought it's 26, 27. So we have, we just want to, don't want to lose that opportunity.
Right, and I think it's beneficial to them if they receive the letter sometime before that meeting, so they can consider it, rather than, just like the board making a decision on the fly, it's nice to have some time to, yeah, contemplate.
Positive.
We'll, we'll bring that back to the board. We'll coordinate with Tom on the time to bring that back. That's great.
Tabling NPR efforts.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, we're just not totally tabling, we're doing this grant, we're doing as much as we can.
From the Planning Commission's point of view, it's, it's just...
We will pull it.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your hard work, you know? Don't give up, right?
Thank you.
So consideration of board signature documents 2019-606, 607, 608, and 609, and order 2019-035.
Good morning, Commissioners. James Lewis, property manager for the county. What you have for you today is a follow-up, and it's essentially the culmination of previous discussions that I had with the board regarding a request for exchange of property and a sale of property, or purchase of property along Draper Road in Lapine. Quick background to this is, the county owns a number of properties along Draper Road in the northern portion of Lapine. Draper Road connects directly with Highway 97. These properties are one-time removed from the actual highway frontage. The county retained ownership of these properties. We received those, these in tax foreclosure years ago, but retained ownership of these due to their proximity to the properties that actually front the highway and their ability to work with the city of Lapine, now the city of Lapine, Oregon Department of Transportation, County Road Department, for future access improvements for those properties that actually front the highway. Long story short, access to those properties could be provided through these properties on Draper Road, from Draper Road, which is a very much lower order, less traffic congested property, or high, street than the highway itself. So in this regard, this request, we've gotten requests for sale of these properties in the past, and we denied those requests on the basis that we were retaining these properties for the ability to work with the city and work with ODOT. The request at this point is for a property that lies at the stream northern extent of Draper Road, it abuts property owned, acquired by Oregon Department of Transportation right at the intersection of Draper and Highway 97, and this affords us the ability to work with the city, work with ODOT for future alignment, realignment of Draper Road where it comes into the highway. In that regard, ODOT is currently working on a refinement plan for this area that will look at the transportation, access to the properties, and land uses in this area. So in that regard, this is advantageous for the county to acquire this property, because it gives us the ability to, again, work with those other agencies to provide better, safer, more convenient, more efficient intersections with the highway. So in this instance, what we did is, you have, like I said, five documents in front of you, one of them is a sale agreement, that's 2019-606, three deeds, 607, 608, 609, and an order. The order is required under state law to actually direct the exchange and the sale. The sale agreement itself, 2019-606, lays out the terms for the sale. Effectively, what the county is doing is we are exchanging one property for another property, and we are selling the second property for, in appraised value plus 10 percent, and that's $192,500. So at this point, what that will allow the purchaser, which is Star Storage Lapine LLC and Mr. Nathan Knott, it will allow him, he desired this, these properties, because he owns property right on the highway that he is going to develop, it gives him a larger portion of property to develop. And additionally, as he develops those properties, he will be able to provide, which is the intent in the first place of us holding on to those properties, provide access to his development from Draper Road rather than the highway. So he gets the, the visibility from the highway, but he's also able to have a safer access from Draper Road. So it benefits both parties in that regard. So again, your action today by considering these documents, signing these documents, you would set the terms for the exchange and the sale. You would be signing the deeds. We would then have until the end of the year to finalize the sale with Mr. Knott. He's currently working on the financing for this, and the order itself is required by state law to direct the action. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Nope. Going to be a transaction, yeah.
We've had several meetings on it.
So, seek a motion, supporting board signature documents 2019-606, 607, 608, 609, and order 2019-035.
So moved.
What else I got it?
Any further discussion? Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Chair Boches?
Thank you very much.
So we have, let's see, lunch recess, then other items in the executive session? Is that correct?
Yeah, just one.
Okay. I have a few other items, too, so are we going to reconvene at 12:30, or what do you want to?
Sure.
I'm flexible.
12:30, I think, yeah. I'm meeting with Catherine this afternoon, I'm, what is it, 2:30 or 3:00, something like that?
2:30 is the first one. She was here, by the way, I don't know if you've all met her. She was a woman in the green shirt.
She was smiling during some of our comments.
Wow.
Good, so she knows what we want to know, then.
I said you should have kicked me.
So we'll adjourn now and reconvene at 12:30. Thanks.
Fabulous.
Yep.
Upstairs?
Yeah.